For your viewing pleasure, this broadcast of the Municipal Council Meeting of Alpena is made possible by the funding provided by the City of Alpena. Thank you for your generosity.
Are we good? I do finger guns. Good evening and welcome to the Alpena City Council Meeting of December 17th, 2018. Call and roll, please.
Hess?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Nielsen?
Here.
Noack?
Here.
And Walagora?
Here.
Please rise if I'd like.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, any modifications to the agenda this evening? Approval of the minutes from open session and closed session of December 3rd, 2018? Any issues or changes? Citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address your concerns. This is the only time during tonight's meeting with the exception of the public hearing on the USDA, it's USDA or yeah USDA grant, I'm sorry, which will be allowed later. Other than that, if you'd like to do so, please come to the podium. And Mr. Wilson can wait for, and Mr. Lappin can also wait if you have insurance statements for that to come to the agenda. Anything outside of that, please come to the podium and state your name and address for our records. Name and address.
My name is Brandy Voucher. My address is 810 First Second, Alpena, Michigan. And I am here on behalf of the Friends of the Alpena Outdoor Ice Rink Project. We are to build an outdoor community ice rink during the winter months in Alpena community. And we also hope to bring in people from Roger City and those and things like that to have outdoor ice rink for kids for free. To bring more people to the downtown area during winter months and encourage them to shop and eat while they're here visiting and get to check out the ice rink. To give kids something to do during the wintertime and to hopefully get more kids involved in ice sports and actually help promote and grow Northern Lights Arena. We don't want to work against them, we want to work with them and get more kids involved. To work with the City of Alpena to make an annual outdoor ice skating rink a permanent structure during the winter months of downtown. We want to grow the interest in the rink and bring people, which we might be able to maybe create like a winter fest or something to help promote this and grow it over the years to come. We also are establishing an LLC, 501(c)(3) status so we can continue to raise funds to be able to be a nonprofit for this also. The rink size that we did purchase and order with the grant that we've already got is 40 by 60, which is the standard size ice rink dimension wise. We are looking at doing this at Bayview Park. There's a fire hydrant down there. The parking lot is already maintained by the city. We've gotten permission, or we've talked to, I should say, the water city engineers and things like that about using that fire hydrant to go to do this. And we have volunteers maintaining the rink this year.
Excellent. And we have, that's also on our agenda for later, so if you're, if you'll stay, in the event, we have some questions.
Perfect.
Thank you, Brandy. Okay, what else? Okay, tonight's consent agenda, A is bills to be allowed in the amount of $692,983.38. B is budget amendment request to transfer $20,000 from major street construction to major street maintenance. C is the city manager reappointment of James Malaski to the Housing Commission for a five year term expiring 12/1/2023. D is council reappointment of Bernie Nethercutt and Elizabeth Littler to the Wildlife Sanctuary Board for a three-year term expiring 12/1/2021. And E is mayoral reappointment of Mike Mahler to the Authority for Brownfield redevelopment for a three-year term expiring 11/1/2022. I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Susan? Hess?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noack?
Yes.
And Walagora?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next up is down to item 10, is a public hearing. U.S. Department of Agricultural Rural Development Grant Application for a Police Vehicle. We'll open a public hearing and first have a report by Police Chief Joel Jett.
Good evening. Earlier this year, an application was submitted to the USDA Road Development Program with this grant, plans to assist with purchase of a replacement patrol vehicle and its related equipment. I received notice on November 28th from the USDA that the agency had reviewed the application and that the general requirements were met. Preliminary estimates of the vehicle and related equipment tally at approximately $53,438. I'd like to kind of add notation to this memo, and that is, they're in a change over year right now for our vehicles, SUVs, where everything is switching to a hybrid. And so they have absolutely no idea what the costs are going to be for the vehicle. This can be $2,000 from over $4,000, so despite our efforts, we just can't get a number of that. So that number was based on the typical gasoline engine vehicle, so I just want to throw that out there. I have requested the maximum amount of funding from the USDA, that'd be 40% of the total project. And if awarded this, the city stands received approximately $21,000. The replacement patrol vehicle and its related equipment have been budgeted for the 18, 19 physical year, and the city would be responsible for the remaining balance of the project. I'm asking permission from the council to continue with the application process with the USDA. And any questions?
Okay, thank you, Chief. I'll open.
I just had a quick question. That's the first time I've heard about the hybrid. Is that going to have the same performance level, the acceleration, everything?
It's actually better.
Okay.
From what I'm concerned. MSP, President of their yearly motor vehicle administration, the hybrid is actually quicker. Fuel consumption is actually much less, so we'll be seeing the savings there unknown, what we're going to see on the other end as far as maintenance and training for like our mechanics if we need to get them to training on this. We'll have to kind of look at that also. So there's always a trade-off, but everybody is going that direction now, which is not a bad thing. But yeah, the performance is still there.
Okay, if you want to just hold tight for a second, Chief, in case there's other questions. I'll open to public comment if anyone here would like to publicly comment on this grant application. Any written comments from the clerk's office?
None received.
Thank you. Close the public hearing and open it to council discussion if there is any. Basically, I have none. We've done this three times?
Six times.
Six times?
We've awarded five out of six times. We've had very good luck.
Please note for the record that Chief, I would. So, you know, I just, just one quick comment, Joe, is thanks for, you know, looking. We've asked all the departments and we really do appreciate you, you know, looking for alternatives to be able to fund this. And so I think it goes to just show, you know, the efforts that you're putting in if we got five out of six times. So I, you know, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
It's a good project.
It is. 40% of our argument at that point, so we've had very good luck in the past, so you never know, but so far, so good.
Joel, do you anticipate having to reapply for more vehicles or will this be it for a while?
Well, during the last budget period, we talked about, actually, we were going for two vehicles for this budget here, but we understand there's only so much money in the pot right now, so Greg and I had discussed that if we had received this grant, that I might be able to put in for a second vehicle. But I think we're going to probably forego that second vehicle this year. Our maintenance is still good, and we're going to have some other costs, not nearly as much as a new vehicle for new computers that we'll probably be looking at. Because our new computers that we have in our car, or the current computers that we have in our cars, will, are reaching their operational life at the end of this year. They will no longer service them anymore. So we have to start looking at some options there, so I think that those funds will be better spent there instead of the second vehicle. But next year, we'll be putting in for, you know, we always do.
Just out of curiosity, what's the lifetime of a computer for the police department?
For the computers? It depends, you know, technology, it changes all the time. And it's like when you buy a laptop, since you get it home, it's already empty. But we've had very good luck. We have ruggedized Panasonic top books that we carry. And so the actual laptops, the computers have held up very well. But now they're, it becomes a connectivity problem for them talking with the system, and that's what they need to do. And we're getting to the issues now where they're having gaps and that's, we can't have that. It's hard to say, Matt, my guess is the answer. It could be five years, and I think we've had these for 12. We've got a little bit of years now.
Thank you.
Almost thought you were going to go without actually answering this. You're getting good. Any other questions on the grant process or the grant itself? Sounds like we're in favor of that. Somebody would like to move? I move we approve the request by Chief Jett to continue the application process to seek grant funding.
Second.
It's Cindy said it first. Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noack?
Yes.
Walagora?
Aye.
And Hess?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Now we have communications and petitions. Our first one is the ice skating rink presentation. Actually, it's the only one. Rich Solinger?
I was just introducing you.
You know, we have met with the group and discussed various locations. We subsequently met with Sean Pachter out on the site, and we looked at potential location Bayview, right near the corner of Crutch Street and Harbor Drive, adjacent to the existing parking lot. As you can see, there is street lighting, industrial lighting there, which will provide some illumination for the skating rink. Fire hydrant is in close proximity. And I know that Sean and Skip Speaks will be meeting with them as far as hydrant operations, et cetera, if this is approved for this location.
I think we did agree, they're going to water using the hydrant, but we may supplement when personnel and resources are available, that we could supplement with our water truck in terms of water. Is that still there as an option?
Predominantly, it's going to fall on the volunteers to do the watering, but because I can't, I can't guarantee a specific schedule to have that water truck available with other commitments that we have for a night and a half, but we have made that, it would be available if we have staff available.
So the volunteers will have access to the hydrant?
Yes, that's where Skip and Sean are going to be with them. Sean will open and close it. Hopefully not break it. Sometimes that happens.
And it will be metered and the cost of the water will be, is that still the case that the, your group will be covering the cost of the water? So it will be metered as it comes out each time?
If they don't, they're donating it. The Sioux water is donated.
Oh, are they covering that?
I gave Mike a call.
As long as it's paid, it doesn't matter where it comes from.
Correct, yeah. So it'll be metered, but Suez is picking up.
And we're getting an adapter and a hose. The hose will be stored at WAPZ entryway. They have set options to put a adapter right across the street, so the volunteers just have to pull the hose out, put the adapter on. I do have a question on the water truck. Does the water truck, do we hook the hose up to the water truck?
Yeah, we won't be able to drive it up our, our street.
Yeah, we won't, no. And as to that question, because we do have a little zamboni that was purchased also if this is approved, that you hook on the hose. And I've heard that it's a hand, yeah. We didn't, it's a zamboni. We have lots of hones. No. So that's part of the package. I think that's what we should do it from the local authorities.
I guess, do you have any idea what the hours of the rink would be? And if in the evening, would it need additional lighting?
Well, for right now, I mean, we are hoping with those three street lights, and you can see them here and here, that we will provide sufficient light, but we're not, at this point in time, we're not looking at adding any additional lighting in there.
We did take some photos of the area at night with light and with the sidewalk. It's pretty well lit. And this year, we're planning on possibly not be late because it is going to be run by volunteers. We don't want to have to have them go at midnight to do this, so we're thinking to have maybe earlier hours to hose, maybe 8:00. That way, the volunteers can go at 8:30 to resurface. We haven't really, we haven't got the feedback from the volunteers yet, but we don't want to make them go to this at a time that's not convenient for them this year. But with that being said, we don't have, and our parks, you know, in summer, at dusk, they're closed, but we can't, you know, it's a little different in the winter. So I didn't know what the rules were for that, and I don't know, we don't have sign-in. I don't know that we're going to have closed right now unless you're all.
Typically, the parks close at 11, I think 11:00 PM, so.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, we've had, we've had a rink at Mishkewas, we had a rink at McCray Park, you had a rink. Well, I shouldn't say you, I guess some volunteers that you were.
Yeah, we tried.
I mean, I don't, I just don't recall us ever having any issues with people skating too late at night. I don't even really think it's necessary to have a discussion.
And honestly, if there are people skating there, when our volunteer comes to, they should help.
Yeah.
Skaters, go and welcome to help out if that's, you know, we're not, there's only so many people that are going to be trained on how to use the hose and the adapter. But I think community help is always encouraged.
If you don't want them on there, just spray them with the hose.
Just spray them down.
That'll close it.
They become.
Sound good.
Typically, we have, and there's any of our other, you know, the optimists. Optimists headed at McCray Park, we didn't put a signage up, and we headed at Mishkewas. I'm not loving the signage.
So will we provide garbage cans or?
Yeah, that's a good question. Either some down, I don't know, that would be.
We've probably pulled most of them, but we can, if this, if it goes into operation, we can drop a couple off. I know we've, we've still got some over here in parking lots and at different locations, so we have to push a couple more, you know, down in that area, we can.
Maybe a couple of benches? Can we draw a couple of benches down there?
Probably don't have any, we don't have benches.
We'll get benches. Really, if they don't, they're talking to you. I guess somebody here has a couple they have.
I don't. Now, this is a. I think we would just like a motion that the council approves the project unless they go ahead and spend time on anything.
I move that we approve the ice skating rink project.
Second.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noack?
Yes.
Walagora?
Aye.
Hess?
Yes.
And Johnson? Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Good luck.
Good luck. Thank you.
Okay, we don't have any unfinished business. Our first new business is property and liability insurance recommendation.
On November 16th, the city opened RFPs for property and liability insurance. RFPs were sent to 13 vendors, as well as posted on the city's website with four proposals received. An insurance proposal review team consisting of Greg Sundin, Rich Solinger, and myself reviewed proposals and decided that UK Insurance Agency and MML did not meet the bid specifications. Clarifications of coverage were needed between the two remaining companies, and therefore, Mr. Steve Lappin of Lappin Agency and Mr. Steve Wilson of Alpena Agency were invited to a meeting to further discuss coverages with the insurance review team. During the meeting, it was discovered that Lappin Agency's proposal was based on occurrence-based coverage only, while Alpena Agency was based on claims made coverage for wrongful acts and employment practices legal liability and occurrence based for all other coverages. Therefore, it was decided to give Mr. Lappin an additional opportunity to make modifications to the proposal. The modifications included lowering the excess umbrella limit to $11 million, changing the business income limit to $500,000, and adding three years of prior acts coverage to protect the city should a loss have occurred in 2016, 17, and 18 that was not yet reported. The revised annual premium from Lappin Agency is $150,262 for the first year, and then would be $136,806 in years two and three, for a total term of $423,874. Mr. Wilson of Alpena Agency was also given the opportunity to re-quote based on the excess umbrella limit being lowered to $11 million. Alpena Agency's revised proposal is $139,697 each year for a total three-year term amount of $419,091. Further discussion amongst the review team continued, and we all agreed that both companies are very capable of meeting the city's needs for insurance coverage. However, the team felt that Lappin Agency's proposal offered broader coverage on inland marine equipment and buildings and structures located along or near the watershore. It is my recommendation as Clerk, Treasurer, Finance Director to award the contract to Lappin Agency for $150,262 for year one, which includes three years of prior acts coverage, and $136,806 in years two and three, for a total three-year term policy of $423,874. Also to be included are three one-year renewals at a mutually agreed upon amount.
And it's my understanding that Mr. Wilson would like to present some information, and then of course, we would allow Mr. Lappin the same in the event that he does.
Good evening. I'm Steve Wilson and the co-owner of Alpena Agency. I'm a partner with my brother, Pete Wilson. We have 30 people at Alpena Agency, and we've been a family-run business in Alpena for over 90 years. I want to first of all, thank the city for allowing us to provide the insurance for the past seven years for this, with the city. And due to timing issues, we are glad to allow for a, our bid to be put into force on December 1st, because that was the actual renewal date. And we did negotiate with the insurance company that if you chose not to go with Alpena Agency, that we would allow for a pro-act cancellation, so you're in good hands in that department. I did want to make one sidebar for Joel, that all your police cars are in replacement cars, so your new hybrid, you're all set. Our program is through Trident Insurance, and Trident Insurance insures thousands of municipalities nationwide, and they insure hundreds in Michigan. So it's not like a new program, it's been around a long, long time. And I note that in the comments that there was saying that maybe our property coverage was deficient to some degree, and you know, I would, I would not agree with that at all. Our coverage is very strong. I think it's done a nice job, and so I'm very confident that it provides the coverage the city needs. We structured a little different. We like to have everything under the property portion of policy, which provides for, to have all structures covered under the blanket limit of insurance at agreed value, and that makes a big difference. Some of the structures are also covered by the flood policy. All flood policies have restrictions, and there's ways to get some of the, if you're in the FEMA flood zone, they tend to exclude that. And so, but we have ways to get that out of there. There's a method to do that because the map itself is just arbitrary, and some structures are not in the flood zone, and they can be taken out. You just have to make application to FEMA, which we can arrange. The other issue that I'd like to just address briefly is this claims made versus occurrence. Now, when we wrote the insurance seven years ago, it was the public official's liability and the employment practices liability were on a claims made basis. So we just continued what was happening at that time. The retroactive date, I don't know how, all you're familiar with this, but I'm just going to go through it just for clarification standpoint, is 2000, meaning that any claim for a public official or employment practices that occurs from December 1st, 2002 through now, and is reported, and reported during our policy term, is covered. I assume it was occurrence policy prior to that, so any claim that happened prior to that would be covered by the policy supports at the time. As you mentioned in your remarks, that your current policy, the Lappin proposal was occurrence with a three-year tail coverage, which is very typical. However, the situation with that is that, so our policy would end on January 1st, 2019. Then their tail coverage would come into place, so any claim occurring prior to January 1st, 19, would be covered under their tail as long as the three-year, three-year term didn't run out. So once you go into year four, there would be no coverage. So I know we've saw in, we've seen on TV and paper, about all this harassment claims that happened years ago. Or you have a zoning issue that nothing really ever comes up, but now it does. So, and you have situations where you might have statute of limitation claims, but who's going to defend you? So the three-year tail is just not long enough. It creates this huge gap. You have coverage for three years, a claim becomes filed year four, year five. That's a problem. So that's my biggest concern with the other program as I understand it. So anyway, I'm very confident our property coverage we've been providing. The program has been great. We've represented this company. We've had lots of claims under Trident, and they, they generally reflected, or taken the view that they want to cover the claim. We have some, you know, all maybe experienced or heard companies otherwise, but they're not like that. So what I'm saying today is I would like a motion for the council to continue their insurance with Alpena Agency for the next three years. We have fixed rates, we're all set, you know, and changes would be, what, exposures change? So best. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Steve Lappin of the Lappin Agency. A couple of, a couple of quick clarifications, if I may. Not enough room. We've been doing this for a long, long time. We started a program in 1985, April Fool's Day, 1985, and it is a product that has been going steady since that time. We provide coverage to about 2,000 municipal entities in Michigan, and we've stretched out into about 13 other states, so we know what we're talking about. Clarification on the tail coverage, there's a, sort of an insurance 101 here. Tail coverage would be the wrong term, we're actually providing prior acts coverage, which means we're going back in time to protect a situation that may have happened, we don't know. And if it hasn't been reported during the policy term on an occurrence, on a claims made policy, then there's a gap. Whenever you leave a claims made policy to move into another coverage type. I prefer the occurrence policy. Years ago, when we wrote the insurance for the city, it was always on an occurrence basis. I don't know when it changed, I don't know why it changed, but it provides an instant problem from a, from a coverage standpoint, on risks for losses that have happened that still haven't been reported to you. And so I always prefer that. been reported to you, and so I always prefer that. There are some nuanced coverages on our policy, I don't know the Trident policy, I know my policy. Inland Marines section of our policy is by far broader. There is coverage for docks, wharves, piers, which are typically not considered to be structures, and in fact, typically, under a usual property coverage part, that would be a specific coverage exclusion. So I took bid specs, and I altered the bid specs from what I had received, and that's why there is a disparity between the building values that I offered and the inland marine coverages that I offered, value-wise. But I believe it'll all still equal out to the right dollar amount, but it was more important to put things like docks, wharves, piers, clocks, bridges, those sorts of items that would otherwise not be defined as structure. They're defined as an instrumentation of communication, so therefore, they end up on an appropriate coverage part known as an inland marine coverage. Flood-wise, we don't deal with the FEMA. Basically, all we do is we've excluded the exclusion for flood in our policy. Now, that's a nice tongue twister, but effectively, all we've done is said, under the property policy, wherever there would be an exclusion for flood, we've simply taken it out. And by taking it out, we therefore include it. Other areas that I found of, I thought, of value is that we don't have an exclusion in our policy for professional services that are provided to the city for people that are acting on behalf of or in the interest of the city. City attorney, for example, you are a full-time employee of the city, but you have a practice. We will provide coverage to the city attorney, the city engineer, and those people that are acting within a professional capacity on behalf of or in the interest of the city of Alpena. So I believe that to be significantly important, that that gap is filled. From what I understand, that is a gap currently, that under your own LPL coverage would have to be extended from your policy to protect you while acting on behalf of the city, and only you would know whether or not that was the case. So, as we went through it, we felt that the policy was enhanced. Tokyo Marine is a very, very large insurance company, they have $33 billion worth of business, they work business globally. All of our municipal operation is all handled in Michigan and operates out of Michigan. The other benefit that I provided the city was our Sterling Portal, which I don't know if you've had an opportunity to look at.
I did look today.
But it is a significant enhancement outside of the usual confines of insurance. We will work with the city on HR issues, training issues, compliance issues, those sorts of things that you would otherwise have to set by from independent contractors. We will set you up with a portal that will allow you to do it in-house without the expense, it's just in the program. Or it's in my offer, it's not in the insurance program, it's outside of the insurance program. It's called Sterling Portal. HR issues are taken care of. If you have any issues of not understanding something, it's quite literally going out onto the portal, typing in your question, or asking an expert, you have 11 hours a day free use of it. So we're very comfortable in what we're offering the city, and we certainly hope that the city agrees with what we've set for, and are looking forward to working with you. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer any of them.
I do not, but thank you, Steve. And Steve. Obviously, both of these gentlemen and their families and their businesses have been not only practiced in the city of Alpena area for many years, great background, and both, if I understand correctly, have insured the city before without issue, which makes it very difficult, in a sense, that I wish one of your proposals was like 50 grand higher than the other, making it obviously a little bit easier for us. I am...
There is also the bridge that was bid, we only received a bid on that from Alpena Agency, and at this time, we haven't made a decision whether to go forward with that yet, and that's not part of this proposal, but it is part of the bid that we had received.
We will be looking at that. It came out that there are some things we probably should look at in terms of just what value we want to insure at, which certainly affects premium, but also just the practicality of the insurance, and those are things that we feel we need to look at. We're talking mainly at this point about the drawbridge, Second Avenue, which has never been insured, is my knowledge, is that correct, Reg?
And was a number of years ago.
But especially before the rehab, that nobody would touch it to even insure it. The Ninth Avenue Bridge has been insured, and that's a lot easier as a fixed bridge to do.
That policy is renewing on the 20th?
So we'll have to be making some decisions there. But also, with the Second Avenue Bridge, I guess, within reason, the state of Michigan under their new program for movable bridges will cover expenses, and that will include the insurance cost, correct, Reg?
Yes.
So whatever that costs, even though we shouldn't just say, well, we'll go with the high, you know, the most comprehensive, because if it's not really needed or practical, we should go with what's a realistic policy and premium, but that one will be reimbursed by MDOT, so that's a big thing. That's a very significant amount of money, so, and all this is going to have to be looked at here fairly quickly.
And so I understand, I'm sorry, and then, but the way I understand it, that those are separate policies, they're not even really part of this.
Right.
So you're going to make us do this again?
Yep, yes, we're going to make you go ahead.
We love doing this.
One of the big questions I had, obviously, this isn't an apples-to-apples comparison, because you had mentioned in here the structures, that seems to be the difference. And if I recall correctly, one of the issues that we were looking for is to have piers and docks and everything like that included in the insurance after we went through the bid with the boardwalk, is that correct? Was that the criteria that you were looking for?
Yeah, anything alarmed, we have a lot of infrastructure above ground, buildings, structures, bathrooms, pavilions, the walkway, which is a structure, at least, we look at as a structure, and other things that are either along the water or very near. And so, coverage there is very important to us, because there's some of our, well, we have two plants, a water plant, a wastewater plant, that are right there along the water, and so all of those are important to have, you know, coverage on, and that was one thing. I'm not sure, I mean, listening to you, Steve, when you talked about, you know, going back, and you have, whenever that came into being, I don't know, it was, I'm going to plead ignorance to say it was before my time, with those being claims, is that based? Is that the only way to maintain the coverage you're talking about back to 2002 or whatever, at basically a very low cost, is by continuing our current policy? If we change, the only way to get that all the way back to 2002 is you'd have to pay a prior claims or whatever it is, policy that would cover all those years, which gets more and more expensive?
Yeah, the only reason I picked three years was, has more to do with just when suits can be brought forward. There are statute of limitations that apply, and three years seem to be a reasonable timeline, it was not likely that you were going to have extensive claims that would stretch well back into time, and you can buy more, but I just didn't feel as though, certainly with our experience, that the level of litigation that we see coming in, whether it be a wrongful act through an employment situation, or whether it be a suit that would come in on a zoning issue, or some other type of issue, usually don't come in. In fact, historically speaking, through 35 years, when suits happen, we rarely, in fact, I can't think of any suits that we've seen that have come in after that three-year timeline. The council could certainly say whether or not the statute of limitation applies in most situations, three years, but beyond that, it's very unusual that we get suits coming after that timeline.
I guess, Greg or Bill, do you have any revelation, any suit being, coming to us? Is it historic, do we have any history, basically, that has ever seen a suit come beyond that timeline?
Nothing that I'm aware of or could recall off the top of my head. I mean, I, you know, express no preference as to who you ultimately decide, but I think it's fair to say that it's pretty rare to be sued for an event after three years have passed. It's not impossible, but it's very rare.
That was my question. You're just exposing the city to a gap that doesn't perfect, anything is possible.
It yups down to a dollars and cents, unless we continue with the same policy, if we ever want to switch with anybody, there's going to be a major expense to cover that gap, especially as far back as 2002. It would probably be, it could be more than, I'm not sure what it is per year.
That was my whole point. I have the ability to go back and say, listen, I want to change my policy term to a claims-made policy and buy this tail coverage, but it will always be, it will always be there, three years from now, five years from now, six years from now, 10 years from now. Whatever you, if you're on a claims-made policy, you are essentially stuck on a claims-made policy, and if the insurance company decides to take a significant rate increase, you go along with the rock. And so, that's why I felt that the occurrence-based policy stabilized pricing more so than a claims-made. And if you became disenchanted with me, then if you moved forward, then you wouldn't have to worry about that tail, because it would be there, because the next bid specs would require occurrence-based coverages, to protect that from this point forward. And that was my only logic, because I could have reduced the price, but it wouldn't have fixed the problem.
I'd say I disagree. The claims-made program is fine, it's been consistent since 2002. Your costs with us over the last seven years have been very consistent using that type of coverage. The overall cost of the public officials is very low portion of the policy. I have no issue with the continuing on claims made. The one advantage of claims made is that your current carrier adjusts the claim, not a carrier, if something came up prior, you know, before us, you would be dealing with, on an occurrence form, you'd be dealing with whoever was the agent company at that time, whether they were in useful business or not, or retired, or whatever. So the advantage is that you're just dealing with, you're dealing with your current agent today who has a very vested interest in doing a good job for you.
My first year, but in the past, maybe the past year or past five years, how many claims have we made as a city, and how has this service been, you know, from our, I don't know, it's a big question.
Well, I mean, I think most claims have been taken care of and have been reviewed, probably some have been declined or refused because they didn't fall under certain, the biggest one where we had nothing was across the river, where that was 260,000 or 70,000 out of pocket, because we ended up with absolutely zero coverage of it.
Because it wasn't considered a structure?
Well, I'm not sure, I mean, at the time, what we were told, what I was told, was that it was because the damage was caused by water, and therefore, it was excluded.
The story on that is that, at the time, when I worked with Karen, and I were unaware that that was a structure, and I think, the thinking, a lot of the thinking behind that was that that was just a more riprap, or a structure of the nature that it was like the one on the other side of the river. We've been there 100 years, you just never, you know, I think that was the general thinking at the time, versus thinking that there would be some sort of design issue and have a problem with it. I mean, I think that was, I think the thinking was just in a different spot at the time, that there would be no problem with that area. So, just a communication type of thing, it just wasn't scheduled on the policy. Whether the collapsed portion of the policy recovered that, you know, I can't say I'm not the insurance company, seems to me, when you look up how insurance policies apply to collapse, it could potentially be covered, but that was the issue with that, it was just a situation where, it was like the other side of the river, that's been there 100 years, it's built, it's done, it's good, no worries. I think that's the kind of thinking at hand.
To answer your question about the five years, this is our five-year loss history, and the insurance agency has paid $135,932 for us. We paid a deductible of $5,900 over the course of five years. Right, Steve?
Thank you.
I don't have any further questions. Anyone else? I don't have any specific questions. I'm not an insurance professional, tried to gather as much information from what you were saying. We had a team, and that was professional on our behalf, is how I kind of feel, I don't see any huge issues here. As far as the coverage, the term for it, I forget now, but the coverage that dates back, if something were to...
Prior acts coverage.
Prior. I think every council would probably kind of take that minimal monetary or venturous risk, or like Greg said, we would kind of be, we would kind of have to stay with the same insurance company forever. Again, I think very highly of both companies and both the gentlemen that were here. I'm personally inclined to go with staff's recommendation, I don't know if it's changed at all this evening from what it was, or not saying that it has. With all of their research and what they've done, I'm not, I don't have any doubt that they haven't.
I have a question for Steve Wilson. If in three or six years, when we decide to bid this out again, are you able to provide the same type of coverage that Lappin Agency can with the occurrence-based for everything?
Yeah, the program I have can do occurrence, or it can do claims made, you have that choice.
I have to agree with the mayor, that we all work on subcommittees, and we all hire subcommittees, and we have more information than us, and we looked at them for recommendations, we read the material that they got, and I was looking forward to this presentation as well. I haven't heard anything that's changed what the recommendation is.
I guess the only disclaimer I'll put in for the three of us, we're not insurance experts either.
No.
You know, and, you know, we get, we listen to everybody, we read it, and we listen, we ask questions, and it's nothing against either one, in the end, we'd probably be served well by either. Like you said, it would be so much easier if there was a nice discrepancy between the bids, that would simplify it, and it isn't. Basically, the discrepancy is very small, and it's more on interpretation of how the policies work, and I don't know that any of us three are any more, you know, expert than you are as a council, to be able to, you know, say what is... a council, to be able to, you know, say what is the better way to go. We looked at, we made it, you know, a recommendation based on our best knowledge, and that's all we could do.
I'll make motion. I'll move that we approve the bid from Lappin Agency for the property and liability insurance as presented.
Second. Noack?
Yes.
Walgura?
Aye.
Hess?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
And Nielsen?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is the citywide boiler inspection contract renewal recommendation.
Back in 2016, we bid on boiler inspections. This is a requirement that we have certified individuals to inspect our boilers on an annual basis. At that time, we received two bids, and the bid was ultimately awarded to Wyancourt Plumbing and Heating. The intent of the project is to perform the annual boiler inspections in accordance with the 2009 Michigan Boiler Code Rule 27, which requires a service technician to be certified performing annual testing. Wyancourt Plumbing and Heating holds all required mechanical licensing for the inspections. Wyancourt Plumbing and Heating has requested a $10 to $20 increase from 2018 prices for the first year of the contract renewal, followed by slight increases on years 20 and 21. And I'm not going to read each one of the costs in that chart. It is spelled out in the chart. We did have some increases. There were two new gas boilers installed at the wastewater treatment plant, increasing the total number of boilers to three units. City Hall also added a new boiler, increasing the number of boilers to two units. It is my recommendation to city engineer that we renew the citywide boiler inspection contract to Wyancourt Plumbing and Heating for an additional three-year renewal. In no case shall the contract be extended beyond December 31st, 2021.
No questions?
It's just, it's one of those things we have to do. Mike Telshowski has worked with them as far as ensuring that boilers are done on that annual basis, so. I do the monthly, so.
Okay.
We'll get each one.
I move we approve the citywide boiler inspection contract extension for three years to Wyancourt Plumbing and Heating for the prices as presented.
Second. Walgura?
Aye.
Hess?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noack?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next up is a proposal to facilitate park planning for Michigan Cubus Park.
Good evening. For 2004, the city of Alpena was reviewing a planning process for Starlight Beach and Michigan Cubus Park. The end result was the master plan for Michigan Cubus Park and Starlight Beach, which had a stated goal of increasing the level of activity in and around the parks, and set a number of short and long-term improvements for both parks to that end. Major elements included for Starlight Beach included removal of the existing restroom building, restroom building, and the construction of a new restroom facility, a picnic pavilion, a promenade, seating walls, and a splash park. As of this year, the addition of the splash park and the promenade improvements, all the major elements have been completed. Some smaller elements on the Starlight side have yet to be accomplished, including an additional parking, statue, and a pedestrian gateway, and a buoy system for swimming. Major elements of the Michigan Cubus Park side included a number of winter improvements, skating rink for the speed skating oval, a winter theater, ice climbing tower, fire ring, a disc golf course, a picnic shelter, a labyrinth, yurt village, new paving and bypass improvements, and an option for an RV park. None of these improvements were, none of these improvements just listed were constructed. Some other improvements listed in the plan were swapped out for other improvements that were constructed, such as a tennis handball court, which was replaced by the beach volleyball courts, and an area for youth skateboarding ended up being a BMX bike area. Ultimately, with most of the major improvements on the start, at Starlight Beach, have been completed over the last 14 years, very few improvements at Michigan Cubus have been implemented. To this end, staff would like to update the Michigan Cubus side of the plan and ensure to maximize citizen participation in the effort. Note that most city plans are updated every five years. Earlier this year, staff laid up how an RV park was, at the site, could be constructed, and council decided an RV park was not the best fit for this park. With that determination made, staff would like to update the Michigan Cubus portion of the plan. As the plan is only needed of an update, staff believes that utilizing NemCOG as a consultant would be in the best interest of the city. NemCOG staff has expertise in maximizing public outreach and operating the charrette process, and city staff is capable of handling the graphics needed for the updating. As a member of NemCOG for 50 years this month, NemCOG has provided the city with high-quality planning services at a membership rate. Their staff is familiar with Northeast Michigan, and specifically Alpena, where they have completed many versions of, many revisions of the comprehensive plan, recreational plan, and zoning ordinance, and have done so for many of the surrounding units of government. At staff's request, NemCOG provided the city with the attached proposal. The proposal includes a public survey and multiple public input sessions. The public input sessions would be held in a charrette format, which would maximize citizen and stakeholder participation, and would be far more interactive than a typical public hearing format. Staff has budgeted $10,000 for this fiscal year and is budgeting $3,000 for next fiscal year. NemCOG's proposal for the entire project is $12,486. And they anticipate the process, starting the process, if approved, in January of 19, the final product delivered in the fall of 19. Staff would request that council approve the attached agreement with NemCOG to facilitate park planning for Michigan Cubus Park at a cost of $12,486.
The only, I'm well familiar with NemCOG and their charrettes and presentations and things, and don't have an issue with it. The only thing I had was a dollar amount on their final, page three of three, it says that 1200, basically $486, and then under that, it says additional cost, meaning facilitation for $588.48. Do you need to, do you need to put that in? Is that, I just don't want to, I don't want to, assuming this would approve, I don't want to approve an amount and then be shy of it by $588.
I think that's for additional meetings if we go beyond the ones that are listed. And so, we would have to agree and get approval for that. Those are, if, I think there's what, two or three meetings?
Yeah, there's two public input sessions and then a survey.
Yeah. So, if we needed, we wanted a third meeting, then that would cost additional. Yeah.
I understand.
And the other thing that we're looking to do, Rich brought this up, I think, was, I think, I believe our recreation plan is due for an update here in 2020, is it? And since we're making this change, which would be incorporated into that, and we'd have to amend it, and if we do anything with Blair Street after the presentation we received, if we are interested in that, that'd be another amendment, and then turn around and do the whole thing again, is just to, basically, and most of that could be done internally by staff, is simply make this our new plan that we will submit to the DNR, so that then we're set for another five years, so that we're not duplicating our process, amending it, which we've done in the past, and then you turn around and have to redo the thing because it's every five years. You have to go through the whole process, because that, we would just do the, separate from this, but it, but make this part of that. So, we would get it in by, what is it, March, I think, of each year, so March of next year, the total plan, then we can apply for grants in, not next year, but in 2020, and then we'd be able to apply for grants beginning April, with the deadline of April of 2020, whether it's for that or something else, because our plan is totally updated for another five years.
So, the Michigan Cubus Park plan is part of the Parks Plan, which is part of the REC plan?
It is the REC plan, yes.
So, it's one in the same?
Well, it's a separate plan, but it's incorporated into the REC plan, yes.
So, this is just a portion of the REC?
Right. And we would have to, in order to be eligible for grants, once we change that plan, we would have to amend the REC plan. And since the, it's going to have to be redone again so soon, it just makes sense to do that complete change during this time as well, during the course of the next year and be done with it. Because we won't be able to apply for grants from the DNR based on the new plan, at least for anything different than what's already there in the plan now. If some of those elements are there, we could apply for those in, you know, next, in 2019. But if we change, anything changed, we would not be eligible until 2020 anyways.
Any other questions?
I move we approve the proposal to, for NemCOG, for park planning for Michigan Cubus at the price of $12,000, I've got to get to it, $486.
Second. Hess?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noack?
Yes.
And Walgura?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Adam, do you need me to sign it, or the mayor? Doesn't really say.
It doesn't? You can have the mayor sign it.
Yeah.
I'll sign it.
Is there only one?
Yeah.
We should have two.
And next up is Council Policy Statement Number 21 Amendment.
Okay, this will be quick, hopefully. And reviewing various policies and documents related to the city assessing department, Allenberg, who is our contracted assessor now, recommended that Council Policy Statement 21 Guidelines for Poverty Exemptions be updated to reflect the requirements of the State Tax Commission. The policy was last updated 10 years ago. The proposed modifications are highlighted in red. Per SDC requirements, this policy should be and needs to be amended and approved each year, so that the current poverty guidelines are included in the policy. Unfortunately, we haven't been doing that for a considerable period, so now we will make sure that is done. So, thank you for your consideration.
That's an easy one. I move we approve the amended Council Policy Statement 21.
Second. Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noack?
Yes.
Walgura?
Aye.
And Hess?
Yes.
Motion carried.